I call this regular meeting of the Chester County Board of School Trustees on the seventeenth day of November two thousand twenty five to order. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Yes, chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as it is emailed to us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Alright, with that, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Now, chair, I move that we move to executive session to receive additional information regarding engagement with newly appointed legal counsel, to receive legal advice regarding ongoing sled investigation and related issues, discuss matters related to school safety, and to discuss certified personnel recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving into executive session to do, to receive additional information regarding engagement with newly appointed legal counsel, to receive legal advice regarding ongoing sled investigation and related issues, to discuss matters related to school safety, and to discuss certified personnel recommendations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are in executive session.
Do I have a motion that we return from executive session and move back into open session?
Chair, I also move that we return to open session.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor of returning from executive session and moving back into open session, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now in open session. All right, we'll start off with the invocation from Ms. Tara Thomas.
Bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insight, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is the best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom, and we ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
If you're standing, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will begin tonight with our special recognition. Okay, we're going to begin with recognizing Chester County law enforcement officers and school resource officers. The Chester County School Board of Trustees wishes to formally recognize the following school resource officers and school district staff members for their courage and swift actions during a serious safety event which took place at Chester Park Elementary School of Inquiry on October 31, 2025. So each of our officers will be receiving a plaque in recognition and sincere appreciation for your service as a school resource officer to ensure a safe environment for the students at Chester Park Complex Schools and the Chester County School District. All right, we'll begin with Ms. Christina Goins. Richard Griffin. Wanda Alexander. And Sandy Stinson. All right, next, we would like to recognize the staff members. Reva Evans, Deborah Feaster Anderson, and Victoria Woods.
They are unfortunately not here, so I will accept it on their behalf.
Once again, we wish to recognize and show our deepest appreciation to these brave men and women during this incident. I also wish to express my thanks to all of the staff members at Chester Park Elementary Complex, from the cafeteria staff to the custodians, teachers, and all other support staff. Your brave actions and student-first mindset during a school safety crisis ensured a swift resolution to a very serious situation. Thank you.
Okay, next, for special recognitions, all-state volleyball team.
Which school are they from?
Lewisville High School.
We'd like to say congratulations to the following Lewisville High School students for achieving Region 2A Class All-Region. Sarah Ashley Owens. Jordan Welch. And Hannah Walters. All right, we'd also like to say congratulations to Emily Manning of Great Falls High School and Hannah Walters of Lewisville High School for being selected to the all-state volleyball team. Emily is the first student in Great Falls history to earn this outstanding opportunity. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have the GoSciTech Scholars. Congratulations to the following students, and if their principals would come up when I call their names, for participating in the South Carolina Governor's School for Science and Math, GoScienceTech/GoSciTech Residential Scholars Program. Deacon Moss, 8th grade at Chester Middle School. Raylan Jackson, Great Chester Middle School. Raylan Jackson, Great Chester Middle School. And DeAndre Cameron from Lewisville Middle School. Go SciTech Summers Program gives students hands-on learning experiences across a wide range of STEM fields. Participants explore advanced topics using state-of-the-art technologies while developing their curiosity and confidence to pursue their passions in science, math, and engineering. Congratulations to these students. Let's give them another round of applause. All right, next up, we have our Rock Star Teacher of the Month. Ms. Ashley Glenn. Let's give her a big round of applause from Lewisville Elementary School. Coming straight from another country last year, this parent and colleague who nominated Ms. Glenn says, "My daughter faced the challenge of adjusting to a new culture, curriculum, and community. While her 5th-grade teacher supported her growth, spent most of her time in Ms. Glenn's class as a homeroom teacher. During this challenging transition, Ms. Glenn guided her to success academically. She nurtured her confidence, responsibility, independence, and organization, offering tremendous assistance to my daughter, even now that she's in middle school. Ms. Glenn is a teacher both inside and outside of her classroom. Her love, concern, and passion for my daughter and all of her students is extraordinary. Her acts of kindness have made a huge difference, reinforcing my daughter's love and support in this community. Even now, as my daughter advances in school, Ms. Glenn continues to check in and care for her like family. Her influence is profound, and I know my daughter's request to nominate Ms. Glenn will make her very happy. When I asked my daughter why, she simply said, 'Because I love Ms. Glenn.' Our entire family is deeply grateful for all she has done for my daughter. Ms. Glenn is not only a remarkable teacher who inspires growth, confidence, and independence in her students, but also a compassionate mother figure in and outside the classroom. Her care leaves a lasting impact on the lives of the children and families she serves. She truly embodies the finest qualities of reaching academic success, building character, touching lives, inspiring souls, and making a difference in the life of a student. This is what makes teaching a noble profession. As a parent of her former student and a colleague, I wholeheartedly believe that Ms. Ashley Glenn deserves to be recognized and honored by our district as a Rock Star Teacher of the Month." Let's give her a big round of applause. Next up, we have our Support Staff Person of the Month. Congratulations to her. She is with us tonight, Nurse Sarah Gaston of Great Falls Elementary School. It's pitch and that time now, Mr. Hampton. Nurse Sarah has been a tremendous asset since joining the Great Falls family. She provides loving and attentive care each day, so much so that many students find creative ways to visit her in the clinic, even when they aren't sick. Imagine that. At Great Falls Elementary, she is not only seen as our school nurse, but as a valued family member who is always willing to lend a helping hand whenever needed. Most recently, Nurse Sarah helped organize our 2025 See You at the Pole event and recruited students from our New Flag Patrol. Her positive spirit and dedication to our school community continues to make a lasting impact. Two of our 5th-grade students shared, "We love her kindness and her willingness to help, and we love her so much." Congratulations to Nurse Sarah Gaston of Great Falls Elementary School. Our Support Staff Person of the Month. One more. Our monthly student, I mean, it's not student. Our monthly staff support, staff attendance award goes to Lewisville Middle School with 93.4% of the month. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right, and we'll be there to have some ice-cream and cupcakes soon.
All right, next, we'll move on to our public comment. We do have one public comment for tonight. I'm going to read the public comment statement. Public comment is a time for the board to receive information. The board will not debate or comment. The board will only listen during public comment and will take no formal action on these matters. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, questions may be directed to the board, but answers may be deferred pending proper background investigation and formal consideration by the board. Addressing the board does not include the ability to make personal attacks on any board member, district employee, or any member of the public. The board chair or presiding officer is authorized to terminate the remarks of any person should the chair determine that the speaker's remarks violate the spirit or letter of this policy. No political campaigning or commercial solicitations will be permitted during public participation. Looks like we have one confirmed speaker, Dr. Days, and the topic is voice concerns regarding members of the board acting unilaterally instead of collaboratively.
Let me just say I'm thankful to have been here to experience what we've experienced tonight. What a wonderful expression of concern for our community. To Superintendent Snipes, members of the school board, and my fellow residents of Chester County, to all of those school resource officers and other officers who have done their jobs well, teachers and students who demonstrated how blessed we are in this county to have students who are prepared to go the distance. I rise to verbalize my chagrin at recent events in the life of the former superintendent, Antoine Sutton, to ask the school board some questions about school board policies and procedures in that regard. As Dr. Sutton's pastor at Adams Chapel AM Church in Rock Hill, South Carolina, I knew him prior to his selection as a member of the superintendency of the Chester County Schools. As a member of the church's steward board, he had attained the highest lay office in the local church and was an advisor to his pastor. He was also the treasurer of the church and was always conscientious, meticulous, and transparent. He has always been a man of deep faith. So I was quite puzzled to find out that the school board took its most recent actions in Dr. Sutton's regard. Accordingly, I have several questions. Number one, who was involved in the supposed investigation of Dr. Sutton? Number two, who discovered the alleged evidence, and how can the public be certain of its veracity? Number three, what was the nature of the school board's deliberations prior to taking this to a vote? Number four, how and when did the vote of the board take place resulting in the school board's actions? Number five, are the records of the deliberations and the vote currently available to the public? Number six, did every member of the school board have an opportunity to address the issues raised in the previous questions, including the reliability of the evidence and the opportunity to vote? And number seven, what are the school board's policies and procedures regarding the aforementioned questions 1 through 6? Let me just say thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you for an opportunity to speak on this matter. I look forward to hearing some answers from the school board at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Dr. Days. All right, next, we'll move on to executive session action items. Do I have a motion to approve the certified personnel recommendations as presented in executive session?
Madam Chairman, I would like to accept the certified personnel recommendations as presented.
Is there a second?
I'm second, ma'am.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the certified personnel recommendations as presented in executive session, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next, for the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, with that, we'll move into our staff reports, beginning with the operations report from Thomas Barr.
Good evening, school board, board chairs, and members of the public. Tonight, I will provide current project updates for the operations department. The Lewisville Elementary gang restroom epoxy project was completed for $43,903. The Chester Middle School gymnasium floor was completed for $232,750. That will be reimbursed through insurance. The Chester Middle School locker rooms are scheduled to be completed by the end of the month. Painting and installation of fixtures remain. The cost is $211,780. This will also be reimbursed by insurance. The Great Falls Secure Doors wiring project was completed for a cost of $53,232.95. During this project, we ran into an issue with the doors leading from the cafeteria out into the courtyard, and we needed to add two additional, two new doors in that area. The Great Falls High Roofing Project will be completed this week for an estimated $1,353.33. That is the shot over the old gym. And this is a shot of over the classrooms, the J.R. OTC area. We should see savings in this project. Other projects that are taking place at this time is the Career Center Cosmetology Furniture. That came in over budget by about $37,000, but that will be delivered on December 15. The Career Center Culinary Arts redesign, we're still working on that project. The Lewisville Elementary stacking lane, we have submitted all our required paperwork to the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services on November 6, and we're currently awaiting permitting. The Chester High School Roofing Project, we've submitted all documentation to the Office of School Facilities. The Chester High School Press Box, that's currently under construction. The Chester High School Lettering, we have received a lettering, and with installation, the lettering will be $359.16. And then the Chester High School Slate Paint, that's estimated at $5,000, and that's to be done over Thanksgiving break. Currently, we currently have two other projects that are taking place. We have a termite infestation at Chester Park and Chester Park Media Center, and we will be working on that over the Thanksgiving break. We will be removing all bushes from around that area so we can treat the outside and the inside of the media center. And we will be working on a tree removal project during our Thanksgiving break, and that to clear the sightlines of some of our cameras from our, one at Chester Park Elementary School, but around some other schools within the district.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The Chester High School Press Box, is that coming out of maintenance? Is that coming out of capital improvements, or is that coming from?
That's coming from the funding up from the baseball field. We have $106,000 left over from the baseball field.
Okay, so the board didn't have to approve any of that?
No, Dr. Sutton approved that.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So Great Falls High School's secure door project, so on our capital improvement plan that was approved in July, that was estimated at $200,000, and you're showing here that it's at $53,000. So did the scope of that project change, or did the actual cost just come in $150,000 less than what was originally estimated?
One of the things we had to make an adjustment on is that in the old gymnasium, it was in such bad shape, we didn't do a wiring project over there because we had to run the wiring to the new fire systems in the old part that's no longer utilized. So we pulled those two doors, those doorways, off of that project. The rest of it was replaced in the newer parts and also in the new gymnasium area. Yes, ma'am, so everything else just came, that's what we ended up with. Now, we did have to add two new doors, which was an additional cost of $27,000. That's because the doors leading into the courtyard were warped.
So by removing Great Falls High School, which I understand the front portion, so by removing that, I get that, but the back half is still in use? So the back half going from the courtyard into the back portion, and then from the parking lot coming into the school? So there were no security door updates in any of the old high school?
No, ma'am, we didn't do any new updates.
And then the Great Falls High School roof, that came in at $1.35 million, and that is part of the 8% bond?
All right, yes, ma'am.
Right, that was what we approved?
Yes, ma'am, but that project should come under that.
So those doors that go out to the parking lot from the old section and go out to the courtyard and go out to the football field, in your opinion, are all secure?
Yes, ma'am, they are all secure. We were making adjustments because of battery packs placed on those doors. In the earlier years, once the battery died, it releases the doors. And so we were working on changing the program, but at the time we didn't purchase the, there's a device that goes with those doors where you can change it to lock. Unlock when the battery goes dead, and so we worked on that with A3, and they assisted us in helping us with that project. Now that the roof is near repair, I will get A3 back out and see if we can possibly wire those doors now. But before, they said it was in such bad shape, it would be a waste of money to hardwire those doors.
So you're telling me the doors to the old section that go to the parking lot and go to the courtyard and go to the football field were in such bad shape that they couldn't wire them, so they're going to need new doors?
Well, the roofing part was in such bad shape, and so we've replaced that. Now that should be completed this week. And so I'll have Greg from A3 back out and take a look at it again and see if we can add those on.
And then the stacking line, I believe that, I'm not sure this has been announced to the board, but I believe that there has been a guaranteed maximum price sign for the $1.226 million. We originally estimated $2 million on the capital improvement plan, right? So the guaranteed maximum price actually did come in underneath, under what we had estimated on the capital improvement plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions?
This concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, next with our financial report, Ms. Terri Smith.
Good evening. In your board packet, you have a copy of the fiscal year 2025-2026 general fund financial overview as of October 2025. Total revenues received is thirteen point four million, which represents eighteen percent of total budgeted revenues and use of fund balance. Last month, I mentioned that we would begin receiving our tier-three property tax, state property tax reimbursement in October, which we have, and that amount was five hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and thirteen. We will receive ten payments during the fiscal year. We have received ten percent of budgeted property tax revenue. So as a reminder, school districts receive the bulk of their tax revenue in December, January, and February. Total expenditures are twenty-one point five million, which represents twenty-nine percent of total budgeted expenditures. At the end of October, the net change in revenues and expenditures is a negative eight point one million dollars, and this is typical at this point in the year because we, we do not receive equal monthly payments on our property tax revenue. The budget has also been updated to reflect the board-approved general fund budget amendment number one. Last month, I provided an update regarding our fraud risk management program in that we would be re-implementing this program in the district. I want to personally thank Mr. Alice Saya for his assistance. He incorporated our fraud risk employee document into our online training platform, which is Vector Training. All district's employees received an email on November tenth, so they were assigned to this course to complete. So they are required to read the document and take an assessment. They are required to receive a hundred percent on the assessment to pass the course. All employees must complete this course by December tenth. Mr. Alice Saya and I will be monitoring the progress. In December, I will begin reaching out to employees along with their direct supervisors that have not completed the course. I also want to thank Mr. Kristoff, who will be assisting me in developing our fraud tip line. Our goal is to have this completed and accessible to the public prior to winter break. The tip line will be similar to our safety tip line. This concludes my portion of the finance update presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have prior to welcoming up Mr. Finney. So I would like to welcome up Mr. Larry Finney. He is with Green Finney Colley CPA Firm, and he will be presenting the results of our financial audit for fiscal year 24-25.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Snipes. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I'm going to start out for a couple of different reasons. This has been a very unusual year, primarily because the school district receives a significant amount of federal revenue every year. For, for this twenty-five-year end, it was a little over nine million dollars that was spent in, in federal funds. And normally, the, so we, we cannot complete our work regarding those funds until we receive what's called a compliance supplement from the Federal Office of Management Budget, O M B. Normally, that comes out in about May or June of every year. As of October first, it's still not come out. We all know what happened October first, and so since the people who put that compliance supplement together were not considered essential employees, we are still waiting on that compliance supplement. So what has happened, we had some discussions with the folks at the State Department of Education, and this is what, what they decided to do was to ask each of the school districts to send in a, kind of a final draft of the financial statements by the December first deadline. And then they've said, once the compliance supplement comes out, we all have thirty days to look at the supplement, make sure all the work's been done properly, and then we will issue the, the final report. So since we still don't know when that supplement's coming out, what you have is kind of the latest draft. We're still in the process of going through our review to be able to wrap it up, and, but we, we anticipate being able to send the final draft to the State Department by December first, so. With that, let me, let me mention a couple of different things when we talk about the financial audit. Number one is the, the primary thing that you ask us to do as the auditor is to issue our opinions. And in the process of issuing our opinions, there's a couple of things that I think are important to, to remind everybody of. One is that the financial statements themselves are the district's. And then the second thing is, what's behind that that we don't always think about that often is how important those internal controls, processes, and procedures are, because that's what really allows the district to make sure that all the information in the financial statements is accurate and complete, et cetera. And so in the process of doing that, I have this slide up here simply to remind you that internal controls, processes, and procedures are basically designed to minimize the risk of fraud and minimize the risk of error. And when it comes to the risk of fraud, the only thing the district can do to help minimize that risk is that opportunity piece of it, and that simply means we've got to have good, effective internal controls, processes, and procedures in order for that, that to be the case. So what you ask us to do then is to issue our opinion, and you can see kind of the highlights of, of what that means. Because the financial statements are not finalized yet, we haven't issued a final opinion, but we are anticipating issuing an unmodified opinion, and I know that doesn't mean anything to anybody, but that's the best opinion that you can actually receive, no matter what kind of entity you are. So a couple of highlights, just in terms of where the district was as of June thirtieth, twenty-five. You can see general, general fund, when we talk about general fund, and I know I've, I've mentioned this before, if you talk to somebody in the, in the government finance world, especially when you talk about issuing debt, you talk about financial advisors and all that, if you ask them, what's the one thing you're going to look at to see how any local government, any school district do, and they will tell you it's general fund, fund balance, and even more specifically, the unassigned fund balance, which I'll mention in just a minute. So that's why we like to start here. So your general fund, fund balance increased one point two million to a little over twenty-five million. You've got one point nine million actually assigned for twenty-six budget, and then there's a little under eight hundred thousand that's assigned for employee loyalty bonuses. And so what that leaves is about twenty-three million for your unassigned fund balance for general fund. You can see that represents about thirty-five percent of what your expenditure, general fund expenditures were in twenty-five, about thirty-two percent of what you have budgeted for twenty-six. And you can see both the recommendation, the G F O A is the Government Finance Officers Association, and they evaluate and up their, update their recommendations every year. And right now, their recommendation is a minimum, and I like to emphasize that minimum piece, a minimum of two months, or about sixteen point seven percent. And your district policy is to maintain a, a balance of at least fourteen to sixteen percent. And there's a couple of things that I, when we talk about fund balance, you know, i- in essence, what it is, it's a, it's, it's emergen, savings for emergencies, anything you might be planning to be saving up for to spend in the future. But there's two things that, that are, I think are especially important to remember. One is what Terri just mentioned. You know, this time of year is when your expenditures are a lot higher than your revenues are because your property tax revenue hadn't come in yet. And so fund balance is what supplies that cash flow to help carry you through those times. The second thing I want to mention is, even though, you know, we keep hearing how inflation's getting lower and coming down, but I want to tell you, we're continuing to see across the board with local governments that there's still significant increases going on in some areas of the expenditures. People relate across especially benefits, as well as technology and insurance, especially liability insurance. And talking to some people in those arenas, the comments they keep telling, or the, that what they keep telling us is those costs aren't necessarily coming down any faster anytime soon. So just for your, your knowledge in terms of moving forward as you make plans for the future. In terms of how we got there with that fund balance, you can see your general fund revenues were a little over sixty-one million. That's about a four million dollar increase from last year, a little under budget, and that's primarily due to your taxes being lower than budgeted, as well as state revenue, but interest income was quite a bit higher than what was budgeted. And then on the expenditure side, a little under sixty-six million, about a seven million dollar increase in twenty-four, but you can see you're a, a little over three million under budget. And you can see that was a combination of both instruction and support primarily being under what was budgeted. So just so you know, you know, you may, you may be asking yourself, okay, well, instruction was lower, support services was lower. What was, what made that up? The draft of the financials you have, beginning on page sixty-two, there's a lot of detail in terms of actual results compared to budget. So if you want to go back later and say, I want to see kind of what happened, there's plenty of detail in there to, to help you out, to see what was going on there. This is kind of the results with the, with the other funds, nothing too substantial. Debt service, because of the short-term debt that you issue, continues to have a deficit, but that's an accounting issue, and it gets taken care of with, with future property tax revenue. Your capital projects, fund balance, obviously, you've got plans and, and assignments for all of that. Just some quick highlights on both capital assets, long-term debt, so you can see kind of where you're at, what the major projects were for the year that, twenty-five, that made up that, that increase in your capital assets. And then on the long-term debt side of things, the one thing I want to mention here, everything's pretty standard here, except for, you'll see that third bullet there about compensated absences. What that represents is vacation and sick pay that has been earned by staff, but has not been used yet, and so in essence, it's, it's owed to them. There was a new governmental accounting standard that came out that was applicable for this twenty-five-year end that required the district to record the liability for its sick pay differently than what it had in the past, and so that's why that increased. And I put this up here, when, when you look in your financial statements in that first statement, there are huge liabilities showing for net pension and your, your other post-employment benefits. I just want you to know, I mean, the numbers are huge, as you can see, that's not actually your direct responsibility to satisfy those liabilities. Several years ago, there was a governmental accounting standard that came out that required you as a district to start recording your portion of what is still unfunded or underfunded at the state level for, for the retirement system and the other post-employment benefits. So what those numbers represent is your portion of that unfunded liability, but as long as you are continuing to make your payments like you have and, and will continue to, that is all you're supposed to do. The rest of it is really up to the state in terms of what they're going to do. You may remember there were several years where the state kept increasing, especially the employer portion of what needed to be paid into the system. That has stopped now, but that's helped a little bit with that underfunding, but it's still pretty significant that they're going to have to figure out what to do. There's one new governmental accounting standard coming out this next year that we've already started, started talking with the staff about, and we'll, we'll address that during the year this year. As I mentioned, because of the federal funds the district receives, you do have to have some compliance work by us done. It's called a single audit. The two programs we looked at this year were ESER and your I D E A. No findings, no issues in, in all our work with that. There will also be a document, a, a second document that we send to you called a management letter. It basically is just some required communication from us to you. If there were any significant recommendations we have, those would be included in there as well, but there, there are none for this year, so. With that, I first want to, first want to tell you how much we appreciate Terri and Shereen, and I think this year especially, I want to give a shout out to Shereen. I don't think she's here, but with Terri being new, Shereen kind of was the one with the institutional knowledge for the year and really helped out a lot. We really appreciate all that she did to, to work with us this year. And so with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The other thing I did want to mention is, once the final financial statements are issued, whenever that happens, if y'all would like me to come back, once you've had a chance to look at those in some detail, I'd be glad to come back at another time and, and answer questions and just have a discussion about that as well.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We have about sixteen percent that we say between fourteen and sixteen percent, but actually, we have about thirty-two percent.
Correct.
Is that going to be an accounting problem for us in the future?
It, it will not be. I, I will tell you a couple of things. One is that that policy you have, that fourteen to sixteen percent, is meant to be a minimum, and so the goal is to be higher than that, hopefully, which is where you are. So that just gives you more room for those emergencies or unanticipated events or any planned expenditures that you might want to use that fund balance for. So no, no accounting or financial problems with that.
Could we use that for short-term debt like we now use the Sago bonds?
Yeah, you could, mhm, you could.
And that.
Yes, ma'am.
We've spent about two hundred and one thousand in interest last year on the Sago bonds. And it's good because we used to have to borrow money back in the old days to start school, but we now have enough money to start school, and if we have that much overage, maybe we don't have to borrow short-term bonds anymore.
Yes, and I, I remember those days of the tax anticipation notes, that's what you're talking about, yes.
The other question is, once again, we had money taken out of the E I A account and moved into the unassigned fund. So it bothers me that we still have money coming out of our E I A account.
Okay, so Terri can probably speak to this better than I can, but there are, some of the E I A money you receive is, is supposed to be transferred to general fund because it's to cover very specific general fund expenditures. So that's, that's not, that is actually what the school district is supposed to do. That's what the State Department of Education tells you to do because the expenditures are in general fund.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. In five years, I've never had that explanation.
Okay.
Ms. Ford, if I can also add to what Mr. Finney mentioned, that five point three million dollars transfer from the Education Improvement Act, that is our state aid to classroom revenue, that is the E I A portion. So that portion, of course, is for teacher salaries and benefits, and that is meant to be transferred to the general fund. and that is meant to be transferred to the general fund.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do have a question regarding debt service. So this is my third year, um, kind of going through this and a question that I've always had and kind of puzzles me. So our debt service always shows a deficit. So this year, for example, our debt service was paid off in March of this year. So why do we continue to transfer more or allocate more to capital and, to capital projects than what we actually have in our debt service and put our debt service in a deficit?
So Ms. Fundaburk, when we get the closing documents for our bond proceeds, when we close on those bonds, there are strict, um, instructions on what we are to do with those proceeds. So on there, it will tell us the amount of proceeds that must be transferred to the capital projects fund. So that portion, when you look at what gets transferred from the debt service to capital, that is a requirement from the bond cell itself. Now, I have noticed, um, that yes, we have had a deficit. And, um, I am going to be researching that and kind of go back in prior years to see, um, see if I can see a pattern on that. But there is, there has been a deficit. We do not have, um, we did not issue a spring issuance this year. Normally, if you have a spring issuance, that balance is sitting out there on June thirtieth, but that was not the case for this past year. So I will be looking into that.
Yeah, so like, I believe last year, the deficit was around six million, which, which I believe we took out, we issued six point five million in bonds. So I get that. I, I think what I'm just trying to understand is why we, why we show a deficit in one account and show the transfer in the capital projects count. I, I guess that's what I'm just trying to understand is why we show that deficit. Because of course, looking back at our audit reports, those do balance. So when you have a one point five million dollar deficit, you have a one point five million dollar transfer from debt service into capital projects. I'm just trying to understand why we do it that way. So I believe last year's bonds, so not the ones that we just issued, but the ones before, the language within the bond ref, the, uh, resolution was very broad. It was to defer capital outlay and capital improvement projects. It, it wasn't very specific. Um, this year, I believe it was a little more specific. Um, it, it had to go to fund the CIP, so the, it would be the roofs. So the roofs of Great Falls High School and Chester High School. So I do understand that. I'm just trying to understand why we create a deficit in one fund and go ahead and move it over before it, before it's actually generated.
Yeah, and that, that came up during the review process that just happened late last week. So we're looking at that as well.
And then I know that this is the first year that we have to show those, uh, sick day, sick and vacation days. And basically what it's saying is you could have to pay those out at any time. So you, that's a liability, right?
Correct. Once it's been earned, it's a liability that could be used anytime.
Okay, does that include the sick bank, the employee's sick bank?
It does.
And then I just want to kind of hop back to the audit scope. So I hear a lot, and you know, my background is audit, so I understand what an audit scope is. But I hear a lot, like on the, the tale of our financial audit, you hear a lot of comments, like, there can't be anything that's a mistake or that's wrong with the school district because they received an unmodified financial audit. But in the grand scheme of, of what y'all are looking at, you are taking and you're looking at, like this year, you looked at ESER and IDEA. So next year, you will look at different programs.
Correct.
And you're taking a sample size. And as long as there's nothing identified, then it, we end up with an unmodified. That doesn't mean that there is no issues, no concerns. That's not what that means. It just means that what you looked at, what you validated, and it could be on a tier, it could be on a cycle, there was nothing identified and unmodified, meaning the financial statements that were prepared by the district, they were not required to be modified. Y'all did not identify anything that had to be changed.
That is correct. And if you, I, I went back to this slide where we talk about our opinion. So, um, these whole, these concepts of reasonable assurance and materially correct goes along with what you're saying, Ms. Fundaburk. Cause it, we're, the bottom line is, we're not looking at all of the transactions. We're looking at samples, we're looking at the material items. We are doing a lot of, of analytical review. But obviously, you don't want us to take the time or pay us to look at everything. So based on that limited audit work we do, we can issue that opinion.
And then also, there is a separate procurement audit and there is a separate credit card audit, correct? So y'all are not doing a deep dive on procurement or credit card purchases.
Correct. It's the same kind of concept with, yes.
And I don't believe we've ever had that yet, but that, it's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Yes.
All right, any, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next, curriculum and instruction report, Dr. Denise Khalid.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'll be reporting on our, providing an update regarding our school report cards that were released, uh, on November third. Um, and of course, we talk about this being our North Star, but also, um, as a part of those accountability requirements, the General Assembly back in, uh, the Education Accountability Act, um, that was amended in twenty-seventeen, does require, uh, that we provide an update as far as how our high school students are progressing towards meeting the profile of the South Carolina graduate. And that is a part of our report card expectations. But we know that that does not start just with our high schools, that it does begin with our elementary and our, our middle school students as well. So we'll be talking about, um, the knowledge in the English Language Arts and Math as well as, um, some of the other indicators that show our progress towards the profile of the South Carolina graduate. With report cards, as I shared, there are federal requirements as well as state requirements. Uh, the state requirement I just mentioned, um, regarding reporting on progress for students towards the profile, but also within the federal guidelines, we are required to report on areas such as academic achievement, um, graduation rate, um, prog, student progress, also student success, which be, it would be indicated by the science and the social studies indicators that are included on the report card. And our state schools and districts have been receiving report card ratings since two thousand and one. This is the manual that outlines those requirements. Um, when this was established, because this information is for our consumers or our community and our families, um, they are not supposed to be, um, something that's not easily understood, so they must be comprehensive, web-based, reader-friendly format. Um, they are issued annually and provide school ratings along with explanations. And when we look at the ratings, um, schools receive overall ratings as well as ratings within each indicator. Excellent will be substantially exceeding the criteria towards the profile. Good exceeds, average would be meeting. Below average is in jeopardy of not meeting and then unsatisfactory fails to meet the criteria, um, towards the profile. Each level has a point range as far as the overall ratings as well as for the indicators. But these are the overall ratings and ranges or point ranges for our report cards that are prominent, is prominently displayed on that first, uh, page of the dashboard online. And so when we think about our elementary and our middle school report cards, um, I refer to it as the, the big five. So we have academic achievement, which is weighted at thirty-five points, preparing for success. Um, that is at ten points. Multilingual learner progress, ten points. Student progress, thirty-five points, and school climate. Our academic achievement, that's connected to the SC Ready Assessment as well as the SC Alt, uh, for students who are on the modified curriculum. And then we have, um, our science also, including the appropriate SC Alt, uh, subject. And then with multilingual learners, if we do not have at least twenty students and if that subgroup within a school, those points are divided evenly between the academic achievement and student progress. And student progress measures the growth in art, in English Language Arts and Math. And then climate, although we do report the parent portion, student and teacher climate survey results are the results that are part of that ten points, um, portion of the report card. With our high schools, um, there are some similar, uh, similarities, but they have seven major indicators. And so academic achievement is at twenty-five points, and that's for English II and Algebra I. Preparing for success looks at our Biology I and our U.S. History. Um, and then multilingual learners progress is at ten points. Grad rate is at nineteen points. And again, if there are not enough students for that subgroup, those, um, points are divided evenly, in the case of high schools, between the academic achievement and the graduation rate. And when we say graduation rate, we're talking about when a student, um, initially enters high school and that they actually graduate on time or within those four years. And often you may hear it referred to as a non-GR or the cohort. So for example, our freshmen this year would be non-GR twenty-six, and we would expect for them to graduate within four years of their initial enrollment. And that's where that grad rate comes from. Additional indicators are the high school student success, college and career ready, and school climate. High school student success is a relatively new indicator on the high school, uh, report card, and there are multiple ways that that's measured. Uh, the on-track for graduation, so beginning with the freshman class, following students to their sophomore class and their junior class, they have to earn at least one English credit, one math credit, and then four, um, elective credits. And in addition to, um, the on-track graduation, it looks at that five-year success rate. So if you did not have a student who graduated within the four years, this is where, um, that, you can capture that data if the student does graduate. And this is also where GED, um, is able to count as where, as well as the employability credential, and that is for our special needs students. College and career ready has a number of ways, um, that students can, uh, demonstrate that with standardized tests such as the ACT and SAT, um, dual enrollment, but also through the Career and Technical Education Completers Status with the credential, um, the Ready to Work Certificate, which is indicated by the WIN Assessment. And that looks at, um, includes information about soft skills as well as those math, real world math, real world math skills and the reading skills that are needed in the, in the workplace. And then work-based learning and the employability credential are also included. So when we look at our, uh, district's, uh, report card results, uh, we did not have any schools receiving excellent this year. We did have one school, Great Falls High, that received, um, a good rating. We had seven schools that were in the average category. So that was our arts inquiry. Great Falls, the middle level, Lewisville Middle, um, Lewisville High, and then both levels of the Academy of Teaching and Learning. For below average, we have, um, Colt, Chester Middle, Chester High, Great Falls Elementary and Lewisville Elementary. Uh, we did not have any unsatisfactory school ratings this year. So in terms of some of the highlights, we did, uh, see an increase, uh, for Chester Park Arts. They improved from below average to average. Colt improved from unsatisfactory to below average. Uh, Great Falls High improved from average to good. With regard to our district college or career ready, um, that first, um, percentage that's listed on the report card, um, when looking at the district as well as the high school student success, we did see an increase in the percentages of those students for, uh, those two indicators. Our graduation rates improved at each of the high schools as indicated in the chart. Uh, and that also, um, resulted in an increase for our overall district, uh, graduation rate from seventy-eight percent to eighty-five point nine percent. In terms of areas for growth, uh, we did have three schools that had a decrease. Um, they're listed there, Great Falls Elementary, Lewisville Elementary, Lewisville Middle. Um, the academic achievement, although we had some areas, uh, that were strong for schools in general, we do know that the academic achievement, uh, in all of those subjects are areas for improvement. Uh, in addition to that, when we look at the student progress as indicated on our elementary and our middle school report cards, um, we saw areas for growth there as well. Um, for example, you could have a school that may have over fifty percent proficiency uh, with their English Language Arts, um, or even with math. But when you drill down to the, um, categories, meets versus exceeds, if you have students who are still proficient but may have slid back to meets, um, then that would not, that would be a negative in terms of the student growth. And then, um, there were slight decreases at eight schools with regard to the, uh, climate ratings. And we're still in need of, continue to improve, um, our college or career ready and students in those percentages as well. In terms of sustaining, uh, continuous improvement, uh, we have been focusing on, uh, the consistency in terms of the alignment to standards and pacing. Uh, we've talked a lot about the high-quality instructional materials. So we have state-adopted materials, but we also know as we, we continue to work and learn what's there, that there are times when we do need to supplement, but we also want to supplement, uh, with high-quality materials. Uh, we actually will have some schools participating in, uh, an HQIM or High Quality Instructional Materials Academies that are being offered by the State Department of Ed, uh, as well. So to help more, help our schools even more and district staff will participate uh, in that academy along with our schools. Uh, we've talked about our assessments and making sure that they are aligned to the grade level expectations. Uh, so that is where we do have some common assessments, uh, this year to help us ensure that and to check, have checkpoints, uh, for that throughout the year. Um, and then making sure that we are looking at that data to provide the targeted differentiation, whether it is for our kids who, uh, need intervention as well as our students who, um, need the extensions. And particularly when we're talking about, um, our, our gifted and talented students or students who may even be twice exceptional. In terms of the coherence of our resources, uh, we want to make sure that what we're doing with our special populations, whether it's special education, gifted and talented, or our multilingual students, that those, um, resources are supporting that tier-one instruction or that core instruction they get, they get in the, the regular classroom. And then, uh, taking a look at our proficiency in that building from grade to grade and each grade level, understanding what those standards are calling for, um, as well. And then continuing the collaboration within our schools, um, with the grade levels and across schools. And when we say horizontal, we mean third grade, the third grade, but also vertically, third to fourth grade, sixth to seventh grade, et cetera. And then just becoming better at the analysis of the data that is available, um, for, at the administrator level, at the teacher level, um, in our schools and planning those next sets that will help to, um, address the needs that are indicated or to extend as needed as well. So in terms of the report card ratings, uh, when we do have schools that are identified as underperforming, um, that would be below average or unsatisfactory, we are required, uh, per, um, prior legislation at the state level that we have the school and community meetings to review and revise the schools and districts, uh, plan, uh, in collaboration with the School Improvement Council. And those schools will develop continuous improvement plans. And then those plans, uh, will be shared with you all in January and for us to be able to submit that to the- be shared with you all in January and for us to be able to submit that to the, the State Department by the deadline of January thirtieth. And want to remind our families that there is additional information and resources through the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee. And so the accountability system is a partnership between the South Carolina Department of Education and the Education Oversight Committee. They provide layman's terms in terms of the, the report card information, but also links to family-friendly standards and just ways that families can support and understand what the accountability and what's expected of their children in the schools. This is also the time of year when we are preparing for our upcoming testing. As a part of the requirements for the state, Proviso 1.96, we are, we do have to administer an interim assessment in the fall, winter, and spring. That is our MAP assessment for grade, first through eighth grade students, so that window will begin when we come back from our Thanksgiving break. And then we begin our state end-of-course assessments, also known as the EOCs. And so those pass rates, we talk about that in September, but those, the scores that our students receive, whether they receive an A, B, C, D, or F, all that rolls into the school report card and those indicators mentioned before in terms of academic achievement as well as preparing for success. And then we will have the administration of our exams at the end of December. And of course, that helps to ensure that our students will let us know if our students are also still on track in terms of receiving the credits needed for their moving from freshman to sophomore to junior year, et cetera. And just as a reminder, we have had our progress reports that, they were distributed last week as well, and so we do encourage our families to take a close look at that, to reach out to the schools if there are any questions or concerns, because again, the report card happens and that indicator happens, but that's worked throughout the entire school year. And so that homeschool connection is important. And as we look at our chronic absenteeism that was reported on the twenty-four, twenty-five report card, we're at twenty-five point four percent. And so that's students missing at least ten percent of the year, or if you want to think of it in terms of days, eighteen days. And so that's, it's imperative that our kids are at school to receive instruction as well, so that we can meet their needs and continue to work towards improvement. And this concludes my portion of the report.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Chester Park Complex, all of those elementary schools, the arts and everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
They came up in theirs, which was good. But Lewisville Elementary has dropped since twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. They had sixty-six, they were excellent. And now they're below average. Do we know why they have slowly been declining and going down?
So we drilled down and looked at the student progress indicator. So you had, we do have the achievement, and that had a dip in twenty-three, twenty-four, but then we saw an increase in terms of the math and the ELA twenty-four, twenty-five. But when you look at the student progress indicator, that will be an example of that. That is measured by what's called the value added, so it looks at overall students meeting their growth goals as well as the bottom twenty percent. And then in addition to that, it looks at our students, they've been given targets, median annual targets as well as their added value targets. So if Denise Coheed had a certain score on her SC Ready Assessment, then there is a target set for me, and to that target there are a certain number of points. So if I were, say, in the bottom twentieth percent, there are maybe thirteen points attached to me meeting that goal. As you move up, there are fewer points, but every student has points attached. And so where we saw the difference was in that growth for the students. So although they had students who were growing, you have to meet for that second part of the student progress, you do have to meet your median annual target, which is being at the fiftieth percentile, but also each student has an added value target that he or she must meet. So when we drill down and look at the data, there may be students who met the MAT but did not meet the AVT. And so those are the percentages that we're looking at.
And do we know why they're not meeting that? Is there a plan in place to try to get them to make that?
Yes, yes, and even working with the school and working with the, the teachers as well as, so when we talk about some of those assessments and making sure that we are having those at the level of rigor, but also that we're able to respond sooner. So for example, when we were meeting with the school last week, they administered an assessment, they saw where the students had not met, they paused, they did their reteaching and reassessing to see where the students are with that. So just being, responding more immediately, but also that we're looking at where they are for the grade level proficiency. That does not mean that we don't meet the needs of students who may be below grade level, but when we're looking at where they are in terms of meeting expectations, those assessments are at the grade level rigor. And we're continuing to work through those and getting feedback from teachers as they administer those as well. But the schools, I wouldn't say, it's not that teachers are not working hard.
I don't think that they're not working hard, but there is.
But we are, but we definitely are looking at that growth area, and that was where that significantly impacted those schools.
Okay, and Great Falls.
Similarly.
They dropped a lot in one year. They dropped fifteen points. They went from average to below average. So what are we doing at Chester Park Complex that we're not doing at Lewisville and Great Falls that they're coming up and the other two are going down? What are we doing, what are we doing different?
Well, there are similar things being done, but for instance, in some instances, we can drill down to even teacher level, okay? And so you can have a grade level where you may have a, say, seventy-five percent proficiency, but if I have thirty-five percent proficiency, that impacts the overall achievement for our school as well as the growth for those students. And so that's, so we, so I would say there are similar things being done at both schools, but we do know when we looked at in terms of some of the staffing and the fact that there were some concerns about the proficiency of some students with, with regard to some, some teachers when we looked at the data. And so providing more support for those teachers in some instances, like we had an instance where there was a teacher who missed over eight, quite a bit of school. And if you're not there for the students to teach them, that does have a significant impact. Years ago, when we had EVOS, which would look at the value added, if a teacher missed eighteen days, that data wasn't even considered valid. So there are multiple factors when we drill down to it and start looking at the information.
Yeah, that, when I saw that, that was very concerning because I'm used to.
Yes, ma'am.
Lewisville Elementary being up here, and all of a sudden they're down here. That's a, I mean, that's twenty-six points over four years. They've just slowly been going down, and why have we not, I don't know, rung the bell or sounded sirens or something saying we need to do something different to help them stay up here instead of bringing them down? Because now we have five schools below average. Last year we only had four.
Right.
So are we putting a lot of interest on the ones that were below interest last year, below average last year, and then kind of throwing the others by the side and not giving them as much support?
I wouldn't say throwing to the side. We had monthly meetings and support rounds with those schools as well, but when we did have the schools that were below average in the prior year, that support was tiered and more intensive, just like you would do in a, in a classroom with students. In terms of some of the practices that we have, when we mentioned those assessments and aligning that, that is something that is being done across the schools and just definitely laser focus with those grade levels and with the, the teachers and supporting them and meeting those expectations.
And then I have a question. It, it kind of goes in line with what Ms. Thomas is asking, but so in the past, the board has kind of continuously been told that MAP is an indicator of the, the state testing, that MAP is, MAP is given and that kind of gives you your benchmark and then it shows where, where you need to do some work. So one of our schools had, had a pretty huge decrease in math for the same group of students. So fourth grade, they had forty point four percent meets or exceeds, and then in fifth grade, they were at twenty-five point five percent meets or exceeds. I'm trying to understand the value of the MAP testing. If we did fall testing and then winter testing, would we have not been able to have identified that there was an issue with that teacher? So those kids all had one teacher, because that is a school that departmentalizes, you have one fifth-grade math teacher. So I'm trying to understand the value, so if, if they took their MAP test in the fall and then they took it in the winter, and our schools, we have coaches, we have interventionists, we, the board, we, we absorb these ESAR-funded positions at the district level, we have coordinators and directors. Where is the point of, like Ms. Thomas said, that you ring the bell and you say, okay, some, there needs to be intervention, something has to be done? Because this is, the same group of students went from forty point four percent meets or exceeds down to twenty-five point five percent, and a hundred percent of them were taught by the same teacher in the fifth grade. So could you not see that in their winter math scores?
That was noted during that time, and there were interventions and supports. And you know, I'm not sure which school you're speaking of because I don't have that data in front of me right now.
Well, I mean, just in, just in general.
Yes, we have the fall and the winter results, we have the targets for those students. The schools do identify and work with the teacher, so it's not that there is not a, a ringing of the bell or an urgency with those schools. So they do work with them towards meeting and pushing the students towards proficiency. But there were some factors that I would say were a part of some of those schools that did have a, continue to have a significant impact.
And I just want to add that if you have a classroom of students and fifty percent of them come to your classroom already below grade level, I mean, if you're going to measure their academic achievement based on what is considered grade level for your MAP testing, it's going to show, I mean, even with the state testing, that they are not proficient because they are behind. And so a lot of times you just have to look at your, the demographics of that class and the students and what the makeup of it is, and some of these questions are, you, you can't answer it unless you know the student's academic background and history, which it would be a great thing if we focused more so on student growth than them actually meeting the mark.
And I guess my question, Ms. Houston White, is you have the same students who in fourth grade were at forty point four percent meets or exceeds, and then the next year, those same students in fifth grade are at twenty-five point five percent, and they all had the same teacher. So I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are, who?
You're saying the students went from the fourth grade.
To the fifth grade.
To the fifth grade, and they had the same teacher.
They, she's. No, they had a different teacher, but they had a significant. They went from forty point four percent where it meets or exceeds, same kids moved to the fifth grade, and they went to twenty-five point five percent meets or exceeds. So that, and, and they all had the same teacher because this is a, a grade that departmentalizes, so there's one teacher teaching that one subject. So my question is, at, because of the MAP testing, could, was it not identified in the winter that there's a problem, that there is a problem, these kids are not progressing?
She said it was.
Yes, and so, and they do.
And you also have to take into, come into consideration that the skills become more complex as you progress with your grade levels.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand, we have these different levels, so we have coaches that are supposed to be coaching the teachers, we have interventionists that are supposed to be pulling kids out to help them, and then at the district, we have coordinators and directors. I'm just trying to understand if we have all of these different levels and all of these people, where is the, i- is there a gap in, does this one, this person think that this person is supposed to be looking at that? Are we kind of identifying and mitigating that early on? Because it, it seems like with all of the testing, and I hear it from teachers every day, we test, 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 test. We test to teach, we test to know what kids need, what skills they need. It, it seems like there was a miss here. There was a miss here, and it looks like it was a teacher issue, not a student issue, and it looks like it was not identified or quick enough to be able to, to turn it around. So that's what I'm just trying to understand, is where, where does the responsibility of looking at these test results, these MAP test results and saying, okay, we need to intervene, we need to step in?
Well, so there is the MAP, but we know that MAP is in September or August and then again in December. So that's where the common assessments that we're using along the way to identify quicker where students are and respond to that data for the students. There were some common assessments or some assessments that were used within the school, and I will say that the school was meeting and working with the teacher in those instances, but we do know that that's an area to improve. And so we've looked at, and that's where we worked with the common assessments that are aligned with the grades to be able to analyze that data sooner as well. And so there are schools, we know that did not have the coaches or did not have the interventionists, so there were some spots that were not filled. However, we are still providing that support as well.
Thank you.
On the other hand, I am grateful that the graduation rate has increased. And I think Chester did an outstanding job of increasing the graduation rate. The other two schools have very good graduation rate. I know they're working on it also. But I'm concerned about what the students put down for our school climate. I feel like that there's a disconnect there. The students don't feel as comfortable as their parents feel, and I'd like to know what we are, how we are addressing that, and you might want to say that in another meeting.
Well, I can, the, one of the quick, the quick answer right now is that our schools are doing more frequent, I guess, their own internal climate surveys to check in with the students sooner and to address those areas of need. Oftentimes, things like bathrooms may show up on the, with the lower scores, and so that's something that may impact, but the schools are actually touching base with the students more frequently and then responding to them or having regular grade level meetings or class meetings to indicate how they are being responsive to some of the needs that they have in terms of making sure that students understand, for example, what bullying is, what bullying isn't, but then how do they have help, who do they go to when they are having an issue and for reporting things? So those are some of the measures that the schools are putting in place. And they, and they may be able to speak to some others, those who are here as well.
And I, I feel confident, for instance, that Great Falls Elementary can come back up because they've done it before. They did it excellently. So they, they have an idea of what they did before.
Any other questions? All right, next we'll move on to our human resources report, Mr. Wendell Sumter.
Thank you. Good evening again, and happy American Education Week to everyone. We will be celebrating American Education Week by giving some tokens of appreciation to our staff tomorrow. I wanted to, my report is relatively short. I wanted to give an update about the retention rate based on the South Carolina report card. And so I have the. And so, I have the rates from 2019 up until 2024. As you can see here, we were, in 2019, we were at eighty three point eight percent retention rate. Turnover rate was sixteen point two percent. And we stayed steady between 2019, 2021, 22, as we know that those were some of the COVID years. We had a slight drop in 2022, 2023 at eighty two and then eighty one point three percent. On this year's report card, and keep in mind that the report card is reflected a year behind, so this is 24, 25. It was reported at eighty two point four percent for this year. However, with our recent, now, I will say that this next slide is projected, all right? With our recent information that we have submitted to Sarah for the 25, because it will be reflected in the next report card, which will be the 26th year. But we are looking at a projected turnover rate of twelve point five, which is a significant drop. And then our retention rate is, will be projected at eighty seven point four percent. And so, we have utilized the same, same retention rate and information that is provided on the school report cards or the district report card as well.
And were you able to identify the difference there? Because I know that's something that we talked about at our last board meeting is that the numbers that you were providing and the numbers that are part of our district strategic plan did not align with the state report card. So, what was the discrepancy there? What was the difference there?
So, on the, on the school renewal plan, it is the number of continuing contract teachers would increase. That's what's on our school renewal plan. So, that's really a different number because this number is inclusive of all levels, induction, annual, and continuing contract teachers. But that's what's reported on our school renewal plan, is the, we would increase the number of continuing contract teachers.
So, just a question on that. So, our district strategic plan, as I go through it, it's, the figures that are in the district strategic plan, our baselines, our goals, are typically from the state report card. So, is that something that needs to shift and change to align to the state report card? Because that is the one kind of piece of our district strategic plan that does not align to the state report card.
Yeah, so we can look at changing it or adding it as a goal, the retention rate that's inclusive. Because on the, the school report card, they do a three-year average and they do just an every-year average. So, whichever, when we look at the school renewal plan and we go through the school renewal planning process, the district renewal plan process this year, we can look at it and see if we need to revise that goal to reflect what's on the school report card. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
All right, next administrative services report. Is it Sheika Houston? Okay, filling in for Mr. Massey.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Alise and I will be filling in for Mr. Massey on behalf of Administrative Services. So, I wanted to provide some insights into the crisis response teams. So, when we're responding to a crisis, if there is a crisis in the district that may require additional support at a school, all the schools' mental health counselors, as well as the school counselors, are assigned to a team. So, if our third-party counselors are needed, they are also called in to assist and they've assisted us on multiple occasions. With the teams that we have, the schools that need the support will receive an assigned team. The other teams are on call so that none of our schools are without the support that they need. The response plan for a crisis has the input of the mental health counselors, the deputy superintendent, the director of safety, the director of student support programs, and anyone else with an alternate area of expertise that is needed. So, of course, the plan is communicated to those involved and executed. And just to add some awareness around the possible uptick in the need for a crisis response team, I'll review some data provided to us by one of our partners at NAMI, which is the National Association of Mental Illness. So, as you can see here, about one, and I should have brought my glasses, one in five U.S. adults have experienced a mental health crisis. And one in six youth aged six to seventeen experience a crisis. But post-pandemic numbers, those numbers moved up from that to one in three. And then the suicide rate is the second-leading cause of death for youth or people ages sixteen to twenty-four. Not only has there been an increase for a need of response teams, there has also been, South Carolina has also been identified as one of the states with the highest number of suspensions for students with disabilities. So, the state has applied some pressure on making sure that we're finding alternatives to exclusionary discipline practices. They've given lots of resources, lots of opportunities for trainings for people and partnerships to make sure that we are getting to the root cause of what's happening with students so that we can support them as well as provide some alternatives to keeping them in school. And so, our Stronger Connections Award will allow us to provide some of these additional supports to schools for restoration and also making sure that we are serving our students that have the most needs. So, the crisis management assistance will be helpful in that. And we're also able to serve our students better by partnering with our families along with our community partners from Hazel Pittman by joining their parent university. So, coming up, we have the Virtual Parent University on Seasonal Depression with Mr. Terrence Randolph. That'll be Thursday, November 20th from 6:00 p.m. till 7:00 p.m. You can register and it's also live streamed on Facebook. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, safety updates.
Good evening, everyone. Currently, we have fourteen SROs assigned to the school district. Two of them are supervisors that cover and visit every location. All our campuses are covered. At Chester County School District, we utilize a standard response protocol, which is the I Love You Guys Foundation. And there are five actions that we utilize. Those are hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Each action is in response to an event that occurs at our schools, and you can see they're listed up here. Everyone's familiar with the lockdown situation, it'll be a lock, slice, and out of sight. And so, every member of our school district is familiar with our SRP, our standard response protocol. They are trained by myself as well as the admin team at each school. Emergent Three is an app that we have, that we utilize here at Chester County School District. It's an app that allows staff to send and receive immediate alerts across various devices, phones, tablets, and desktops. All our laptops that are assigned to staff members have the Emergent Three application installed on them. I personally encourage them to also install them on their personal devices because we always carry our cell phones. Instant notifications are also pushed out to our staff and our law enforcement partners. So, in the event something occurs at a school, our law enforcement partners are notified as well. This just provides another layer to our notification process that we have in place. Ongoing preventive safety measures. We continue to strive to get better in providing the training via our online platform. Ms. Smith referred to it earlier, where we utilize a vector training portal. Some of the things that we push out, which is mandatory training, is active assailant training, AED training, severe bleeding response, and Caesar training for the school personnel. That's just some of them that are mandatory. State pushes out some as well, and we in turn push them out to everybody else. We do conduct random screenings at our middle and local high school campuses. We've purchased earlier this school year Open Gate Weapons Detection Systems for Lewisville and Great Falls High Schools and are in the process of procuring more of these detection systems. Regular site assessments are conducted at every school to identify and address safety-related issues to improve the campuses for staff and students. And I'm working currently with the state to come out and do a walkthrough of our schools as well. I know this was mentioned by Dr. Khalid, but we do have a safety tip line at our, for the students and staff. They can report any safety concern anonymously or openly. And this concludes my report.
Just one quick question. On the Open Gate, the presentation states that we recently purchased those for Lewisville and Great Falls High School. Chester High School already had those, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
So, all of our high schools now have those?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Alise.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our superintendent report, and our superintendent, Ms. Snipes.
Good afternoon, good evening. Afternoon has now passed us. So, once again, Mr. Sumter said happy American Education Week, but I wanted to also say that again to all of us who are here. One of the things you will notice, I'm going to back up the slide. We have put back into our slideshow, we wanted consistency. Senior staff and I have met and decided we would go back to the theming from this year, which is rooted in purpose, soaring to excellence. And we know that being rooted is answering what our why is. And our why, of course, in Chester County School District is our students. So, our purpose is our students. And so, soaring to excellence means that in every school, we want to endeavor to provide every child that opportunity for excellence. And so, we are working not only in just our messaging, but also in everything we do to make sure that that theme runs beside all the things we are working on. So, we have several athletic recognitions, as we know, the fall season is kind of coming to a close. So, at Chester High School, we want to congratulate their first-team all-region volleyball, who's J.C. Ford and Emily Rose Roof. And then the first-team all-region for tennis was Madison McCree. And in cross-country, the first-team all-region is Tori Schellenberger. Their Chester Cyclone Cross Country Team Girls won the Chester County School District Cross Country Championship. If you never had the opportunity, those get pretty exciting. And then, one of the things that our community is very excited is that the Chester Cyclone Football Team won their second-round matchup and will be traveling this week to Strom Thurmond to play in the third round. So, we hope to see them and not only finish the third round successfully, but move on to the next few games. At Lewisville High School, we also want to congratulate their football team. I see Ms. Huff smiling because her senior son is on that team. And they had a big, I think, unexpected win over Abbeville, twenty-nine to twenty-eight. And so, they too will be playing this weekend. They will play at home and they will be playing C.A. Johnson this Friday. So, that ought to be also another exciting game. Their boys and girls cross-country teams both qualified for the state championship and, of course, they had three individuals who also qualified to do that, and that was this past weekend. Their competitive cheer participated in the state qualifier at Lexington High School. They, for a long time, we had competitive cheer, were very successful in those competitions. And now, that team kind of took a little pause for several years and now they have a new, some new coaches in place and are striving to get that program back to the level it used to be. And so, we're just proud that they went on to that state qualifier. It takes a lot of work, a lot of hours of practice to get there, so something to be proud of for them. And then, of course, the volleyball were the Region Two Class A, Region Champions, and they finished their regular season undefeated, but then lost in the third round of playoffs against Abbeville. So, we, again, excited for two football teams who'll be playing this Friday night. Great Falls High School was shouted out. Thirty-nine of their student athletes who made the fall all-academic team for having all As and Bs while in season. Probably some of the reason they got that good on that school report card. Their JV volleyball team also posted a four-point-two-seven team GPA to lead the way for their athletic department this fall. So, lots to be proud about with their athletes and their academics. The Lewisville High School band sent us some shout-outs for Devon Robinson, Asher McCory, Sullivan Shive, and Melody Vionne, who attended the Newbury Honor Band Clinic on November 13th through 14th. This was one of the exciting things I think we've shared with the board. But we had the following teachers who got some pretty good checks. And as a matter of fact, Ms. Smith and I got the email about getting those checks to the teachers. So, we're trying to get those before Christmas. But Teresa Gordon, Nicola Taylor, Alicia Johnson, Kayla Dur, Dahlia Clark, Billings, and Jeremy Price all will be receiving checks. And so, they were part of this strategic compensation pilot. They will again have that opportunity this year. And so, very excited for them. And in the state, they, the checks got up to like twenty-six thousand dollars. And we did not get one that big, but some of our checks were thirteen thousand dollars. So, very exciting that day to get to announce those. And I know they're excited already planning for this coming year. We had visits following our incident at Chester Park. So, we had Alan Wilson, who's the Attorney General, Senator Everett Stubbs, Representative Annie McDowell visit our school. And so, that's what that photograph is. They visited and toured the facility, talked to all of us about safety and security, and just wanted to commend the work of our SROs as well as our teachers and staff that were part of the incident and just the response that they had. We also had our South Carolina State Superintendent Ellen Weaver, who honored our brave teachers and our officers and presented each of them with the Spirit of South Carolina Award. This is an award that is rarely given, but we were very proud to see them all be recognized. I was so honored to get to attend several events to celebrate Veterans Day this year. And so, our Lewisville Middle School group that is present here were part of the Chester County Veterans Day observance and well as some Chester Middle School students. We, as Chester County especially, want to thank all of our veterans, especially those who work here in our Chester County School District family for their service and their sacrifice. I get the privilege and honor to get to visit schools and read. And so, in this month, I've visited Chester Park as well as Great Falls Elementary. I felt like I had gone back home at Great Falls Elementary and got to read. And we had, of course, had already visited Lewisville Elementary. And Mr. Kristoff and I have talked about our plans going forward. Another great thing I got to be a part of was attending the York Tech Open House. Ms. Smith, Mr. Kristoff went with us as well. And so, and you'll see pictured here is one of our representatives from adult ed. And so, that program that York Tech, if you haven't been there in the last couple of years, it is truly expanding and offering great opportunities for our children. So, just gets you excited about some things available to children across our county. We want to remind you that we will have our holiday toy drive this year. Another thing we're going to do at Christmas, and so, I'm going to kind of put the school board on the spot a little bit with this, is Mr. Kristoff, as well as Office of Instruction. We've talked about doing the Twelve Tales before Christmas. And so, we want to record adults from within the district office, as well as we would invite any of you that would be interested to read a book. We will do a video recording, provide that through our YouTube channel and allow our parents over the time of Christmas break to share those. So, we will start on December 8th and run that through December 24th and have those available. Many of you probably have seen kids in supermarkets and places like that who are watching phones. And so, we want to give them something else to do that will be positive. Our hope is that this will be something that we not only do at Christmas, but also open it up to make kind of a library of videos. And so, we would not only welcome the school board, we're going to ask some of our principals and maybe some of our students to participate in this as well, especially those high school students that probably could enjoy doing something like this and do a little give back. So, if that's something you're interested in, please let me know or Mr. Kristoff, and we'll make sure to get you all in the reading group and make some videos. And he will help us out so that we all look very good. And we got the book. And he will help us out so that we all look very good, and we got the books for you, so you don't have to worry about that. In your Christmas jammies, if that's what you want to wear. We also are working with our schools, and tomorrow, when we have our principals' meeting, we'll ask them again. You know, I kind of have been working to give you a weekly update of events, so that you can have the opportunity to visit our schools. And so they are providing us events, and of course, during the holiday season, there will be many events that happen. So we're going to try to make sure you have knowledge of that, so you can plan to attend those accordingly. And that is everything I have in my report.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes. All right, we do not have an executive session two tonight. Next up, we have action items. We only have one item on our action items. I am just going to run over it really quickly. So the board should have received a copy of the Memorandum of Understanding between Chester County School District and the Town of Great Falls. It's actually two, because in the first one, it is saying that we are using their baseball and softball field, and then in the one in reverse, it is stating that they are using our football and basketball facilities for their rec department. So it's two MOUs. This is not an MOU, this is just a renewal, but we are going to take a vote to approve Ms. Snipes re-executing, renewing that MOU. So with that, do I have an approval to authorize interim superintendent to renew Memorandum of Understanding with the Town of Great Falls related to athletic spaces?
Madam Chairman, I move that we allow the superintendent to sign this agreement and to move forward.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, approving the interim superintendent to renew the Memorandum of Understanding with the Town of Great Falls related to athletic spaces, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Madam Chairman, I move that we have adjournment.
All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.